Good evening. Clock on the wall has 6:30. We're welcoming you to the city council meeting on November the 27th. It'll be hard to believe Santa Claus comes next month, right? I call this meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, if you'd read your roll call, please.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
And Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Eight council members present.
You all stand with me. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us again this evening, and he's going to lead us in the invocation. Thank you again, Pastor, for being with us.
Praise.
When you finish, if you just move us on into the Pledge of Allegiance, we appreciate it.
I'll do that. Heavenly Father, we're going to keep first things first in our nation tonight, and offer a moment of silence to remember. Three American servicemen killed and three seriously injured this morning in Afghanistan. Let us remember and pay tribute to these American heroes quietly. In addition, Lord, I want to thank you for the rapid response team who rescued three firefighters out of a collapsed building in Dallas about noon today. They will survive with good care, and I'm grateful, Lord, for their recovery. This gives us pause to remember our police officers and firefighters and first responders, the lifeline in every community in America and our world. As is with the American soldier, their duty is ominous, at many times overwhelmingly dangerous, and it does us well to reflect and pay homage and tribute to their work and their service on behalf of us all. I'm grateful, Lord, for those who serve this city, our mayor and council persons and administrators, and all of those who lead this city, head up departments, down to the boots on the ground that are working day and night, to keep our community both safe and prospering. For this, we're all grateful. I thank you, Lord, for the season finishing up Thanksgiving and moving into the Christmas season. With that goes many activities and many responsibilities from we who live here. So bless us as we gather in various entities and help us to enjoy the results and the objects of our faith in Christ. I pray for this session tonight, and all who will lead it, will share in it, and for the contributions that will be made from the citizenry of our community. I continue to pray for but not limit my list to those who serve this city who need daily maintenance for their health and needs. That would include Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Mr. Moore, and any other beyond this list who needs your daily touch. We thank you for your grace and blessings, and it is our prayer that you bless the discussions held in this session and any decisions that are made. We pray all this with the deepest gratitude in Christ's name. Amen. Face of the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Pastor. At the beginning of each council meeting, we set a time aside for visitors, citizens of the community who have an item they'd like to share with council, and we just ask that you limit your, if you're not on the agenda, and we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, of which Clerk takes the time to watch that, and give us your name and your address. So, at this time, if there's anyone present who'd like to address the council about a concern they have within the city, please come forward, and we'll be happy to entertain your comments. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. This consent agenda is an agenda that allows us to approve several items at a time, which helps expedite our meeting. So, this evening, those items that are on the consent agenda are the approval of the minutes of October 23rd, November 13th, and the approval of the Director Administration Report, the appointment of Francis Vaughn to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the acknowledgement of the Human Rights Commission minutes from September the 24th. Are there any of those items that you would like, any council person would like to remove from the consent agenda and consider individually? Hearing none, we'll move on. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. The yeses have it. Consent agenda is approved. And now, move on to the acceptance, or presentation of acceptance financial report for the month of October. Mrs. Hostlog is with us this evening, and she will ably lead us through that. Thank you.
Well, the good news is we have nine months of sales tax recorded, and we are up 4 percent. So, that's quite the, we're on this end of the spectrum. Probably the biggest news this month is that I recorded the property tax revenues for 2018. $710,000 in property tax, $38,000 in city stickers. So, it was also recorded in the TIF, the Fulton Commons area on the south end of town, and I think $172,000 is the revenue we can expect there.
What was the 38, again?
The 38 is for the city stickers.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That's our big news. Other than that, I think I covered everything in the notes. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Motion to approve the financial report?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve the financial report presented. Is there any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Financial report's accepted. Okay, very good. Move on to discussion of the recycling program. Who wants to lead us in that? Robert?
That's your area. Good evening.
Good evening.
I think in your packet and on your outline, it shows that Wendy from our solid waste department pulled together some information on about six different facilities that we contacted, and Bill just kind of wanted me to highlight some of the information that was in that report. And basically, we contacted the City of Columbia, Republic Services of Jefferson City, City of St. Peters, Northeast Missouri Recycling Center in Hannibal, City of Mexico, and Callaway Recycling Center, with contacting Frank Haymark. And then, I think the past, we were talking about dual stream, and the City of Columbia has a dual stream collection only, and I think in the information you got from Wendy, it shows that they have split hopper trucks that are outfitted to collect two types.
Can you tell us what dual stream is?
Yeah.
No, I can't. Other than, it's two types of material. One is containers that collect water, right, or can hold water, and the other is paper or cardboard or, and that's all I know. Is that?
Paper, cardboard, basically in one container.
Yeah.
And your liquid holding containers, plastics and tins.
Right.
In another container. Right now, the City of Fulton, we have single stream. We put all your paper, your plastic, and your tin cans in the same container, and we pick it up that way. And we've been hauling it to Jeff City for, in that state, for several years.
Right.
Like you said, though, everybody else is, they only want it if we want to go dual stream.
Correct.
We have the citizens separated at the curb or at the collection site.
Yeah, so some of the ones that we've talked to, we may want to talk to more, I mean, they're interested maybe in partnering with us. I think the City of Columbia is interested in partnering with us. Also, the...
Callaway Recycling Center.
Callaway Recycling Center, right. Frank Haymark said he would be interested. I actually talked to him earlier today, and he'd still be interested in figuring out what we want to do. We talked about some different ideas as far as putting maybe some carts out around town and having him come and collect them and pick them up and haul them. And he'd said he'd talked to us about it, but it wouldn't be free. So, we'd have to negotiate some prices on that service.
Robert, did we get a count on cans? How many cans we have out there now?
Yes, we have approximately 738 cans.
738, yes. Thank you.
Is that both garbage and, or just recycling?
No, it's just recycling, yes.
Just the recycling.
I also have a question. Did the November bill for hauling, did it go up?
Yeah, did we?
I don't think we've got any yet.
We haven't gotten it yet, yeah.
Haven't got it yet.
At least I don't have that information, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming it's still at 120, unless we hear different.
So, it sounds like we really don't have an answer yet, but you're continuing to look into it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the recommendation, my recommendation would be, you know, number one, if we want to continue recycling, that we may want to look at just paper and cardboard, maybe. Some of the businesses say that that's where they make some kind of profit from. And that's just me. That's just from my research. The other option is partnering with someone and that's willing to...
I know, we talked about maybe setting some containers, some big roll-off containers around town.
Right.
And having citizens begin taking the recycling to the containers, whether it be the, have a cardboard container and have a tin can and plastic container. And then, maybe at that point, we would figure, right now, it's really hard to get rid of the metals and the plastics. There's just really isn't a market for them. But some of the cleaner paper, there is a market for that. And right now, as you mentioned, we're putting it in the landfill for about $35 a ton, and for us to dump the load at Jeff City right now is costing us $120 a ton for the recycling.
I don't feel like we've got enough information to make a decision.
Yeah. No, just...
And another point is, the 738 cans, we pay a dollar a month for those, times 12 months, that's $8,800 right there. When we talked, when we ran our numbers last month, even if it continued, it was going to cost us something like $20,000 this year for our current recycling program. Well, we've almost paid for half of that just off of the dollar that we charge for the cans. So, I mean, it's, we're not losing as, you know, we think, oh, $120 a ton, when it was $12 a ton. We must be losing thousands and thousands of dollars a month. We're not.
Well...
You know, it's, we are losing some. It does cost us some, and I don't think any of the numbers we've discussed so far include what it costs to go around and pick up each of those 738 cans either.
I think the unknown, though, is it went from 50 to 120, and we don't know what it's going to be.
We don't have a contract.
It might be 240.
So, it could be 240 in our bill in November, and if, I don't think we can operate with something that's that, I don't know, questionable.
I understand.
You know, if it was going to stay at 120, and we had a contract for a year, that's a lot different than what we're operating on right now. I think we need to let him, let Robert continue to investigate, come back at the next meeting. We'll have, we'll know what the November bill was. We'll have a better idea of whether we have central locations for recycling, and we get rid of the cans, or we put it all in normal trash, or we only recycle certain items. There's still a lot of options left.
I'm not disagreeing with you a bit. It's just, when we're talking four tons a month, you know...
Wasn't it 16 or 17 tons a month?
No, per month. It was four tons a month.
No, October was 17.1.
Seventeen, oh, four tons a week? Okay.
180, 180 tons a year.
We need to see all the information.
Yeah.
Didn't you say we've had 738 cans out? How many residents are there?
3,500?
Yeah.
Residential electric meters, 3,500?
20 percent.
Residential electric?
Oh.
25.
And we're only collecting money from 738 people?
Well, we, the curbside recycling is included in your solid waste bill.
Yes.
If you want the blue container, we charge an extra dollar a month for that. So, you don't have to have a blue container to participate in the curbside recycling.
Sure you do.
No.
Because if you put it in the other, it goes to the landfill.
No.
But if you set it out in a separate bag...
In a separate bag.
I do my recycling by placing it in a clear plastic bag, because I only have, like, once or twice a month, and the newspapers will go in a bag, and plastics will go in a bag.
I drive around, and there's not too many white, clear plastic bags sitting around on the...
Well, they come out and pick mine up pretty quickly.
Well, I'm not saying they do. You're one person.
Yeah.
We got 4,000 households.
Well, they are supposed to be separated, and if they're not, then you get charged for, you know, extra pickup, so.
But in the can, it's not separated.
Right.
So...
Thank you. We look forward to...
Yep.
Keep the progress.
Yep.
Maybe the prices have settled out.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, we can hear more information next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll keep it on the agenda till, till we come up with a recommendation or we decide something.
Got you. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Now, move on with the agenda. Tanglewood Clubhouse Discussion. I don't see Clay. You run that, Bill?
At the last council meeting, it was brought up about the city looking at the option of having a private contractor run the clubhouse, be it both the kind of the golf course management side of the cash register as well as the restaurant operations and the pro shop. Since that time, Clay has put together an RFP. It's included in your packet. That is on the street. So far, we've had one picked up that has shown some interest. I'd like to point out, just because somebody picked one up doesn't mean we're going to get one offer, but we have one that has been picked up. Now, they are due back on December 12th. At that time, we will open them and do an evaluation and come back to the city council with our findings. Are there any questions on that? Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
I just don't want to see, from all perspectives, the city continuously turn somebody over in this position. And I think, the way I've read it, that I myself would not entertain it. Food service is 10 percent profit. If you're making 10 percent profit and you're asking for 10 percent growth, I think if you tweak some of it, maybe...
Highly negotiable package.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move on to new business, and Patrick is with us this evening. It's always great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And particularly when you're coming with good news. So, I'll turn it over to you.
It's almost Christmas time, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Patrick Bono. I'm the loss control director for Mirma, and there's a couple of new faces, so it's good to meet you guys. So, I work for a self-insurance pool. Fulton is a member of this insurance pool and has been for close to 20 years. Fulton was actually a founding member, one of seven or so, back in the early 80s. So, we appreciate your membership in the insurance pool. It's my job, across our 80 cities, to try to limit and lower our claims, both from the perspective of employee injuries, but also financial losses, you know, backing into things, whether it's vehicles or residents falling on our sidewalks.
He didn't mention backing up accidents just for our benefit. We have several of them. We have a really hard time in reverse.
As do most other towns. Speaking from experience, as a young police officer in 2001, I actually backed into my training officer's fiancee. So, not everybody is innocent here. I certainly can't cast aspersions on those that commit that kind of thing, but it does happen. And our coverage is in place, hopefully, to take care of not only your equipment, but also, if we back into a citizen, we'll take care of them as well. So...
Citizen's vehicle, correct?
Yes. Yeah, whether it's a body or a vehicle, yes, that's the case. So, one of the ways that we try to limit those claims is through a grant program, and we give back about $200,000 every year to the various municipalities within our group. And Fulton is actually getting a large chunk of that $200,000, and it comes out to $18,768 this year. And I think City Clerk Courtney has put that list of items in your packets, so you should see those, and I won't go over those individually. I will say, one of them is kind of an interesting item. Flame resistant bibs for the gas department. You know, typically, we see applications or at least the use of flame resistant materials for electric employees. If there is an arc flash, their flame resistant clothing helps protect them from the energy and the heat that can occur. But the gas department is kind of, being kind of innovative in this regard. They are actually going to be wearing them too, so should there be some sort of a fire event when they're working on lines, that clothing will help protect them as well. So, we don't see that very often, so it's good that you guys are being innovative in that regard. But I would be glad to answer any questions on the other items. I know them very well, as other cities have applied for many of the same things. Security system at City Hall is kind of a new item. Some towns across the association, as a result of various issues, there was a shooting at a City Hall meeting in Kirkwood 10 years ago, where six people perished. So, the association sought to help pay for some of those more secure items that help make city staff as well as you guys more secure in your functions for your community. So, I would be glad to entertain any questions, if there are any, and I would also be glad to give this plaque to the mayor.
I'm just going to let you talk about yourself a little bit longer. What are some of the different lines of insurance that Mirma provides us?
That's a really good question. I think you would find that our coverage is comprehensive in terms of everything that municipalities need. So, we are designed by cities, and we don't work for school districts, counties, or other political subdivisions. So, when you buy membership within our association, which you're an owner of, you are essentially an owner of all types of coverage that you would need. So, errors and omissions, general liability, workers' compensation, cyber coverage, theft coverage, anything that you need in order to operate a municipality, which, you know, as you can tell from the department here, department heads here is pretty vast. We cover any function within that. Cyber is a newer one that we've had for three years or so. If there is information loss, whether it's accidental, you know, we handed out a flash drive that has all of the utility department's information on it accidentally. We will come in and assist with that. Or if somebody breaks into our mainframe somehow, and user accounts, utility information is stolen that way, that information is very valuable on the black web. And so, we have recommendations generally, which I'm sure the City of Fulton is following in terms of having a firewall. You know, those are loss control measures to keep the bad guys out. And we want to help you keep your information secure and not accessible to the public.
Can you spend a minute talking about some of the inspections and the black boxes?
Sure. Well, the black box issue is really a vast discussion.
You got a minute?
But overall, I can do it in a minute. So, we have an inspection program by which we check about 100 different things every year, and that's going to take place shortly after January 1st. Those inspections include verifying that playground inspections are completed in an appropriate amount. You know, during the time of year when folks are outside, we expect playgrounds to be inspected once a week. This time of year, once a month, is probably a little more applicable. We ask that the HR manual is looked at occasionally. City staff should bring that to you if there are more significant changes. So, that's an element. Harassment policies, we ask for various policies for individual departments that apply to them. For example, well, you saw one of the items on the grant program is confined space. So, we ask that you have a confined space entry policy, more so applicable to departments that are getting in small spaces, water and sewer and other utilities. But in January, my association will check on a long list of items that department heads are responsible for keeping the records of. And these are really best practices for not only really municipalities, but departments, whether it's a private utility or public, doesn't really matter. Municipalities are not inspected by OSHA, but what we say is, if there is a lawsuit, if there is a major injury or a death, the OSHA policies and practices are what the City of Fulton is going to be judged against should one of those things occur. So, while you don't have somebody from OSHA coming in, I guess you could say I'm like the next best thing. We all try to work together in terms of safety and losses to minimize them altogether.
I guess one way I'd like to put it, because of their inspections, they kind of force us to be safer, because they do have the ability to do a special assessment. If they have identified an unsafe feature and you ignore it, and based on some of the scores you get on their inspection, they can actually send you an assessment. And I remember, I know some of you on the council, some of you longer term, probably five or six years ago, we were getting very close to getting a $60,000 special assessment based on the playground equipment at the corner of Wood and Tent. As a result of that, almost getting fined, that's a wrong word, special assessment, that we get to pay more because we haven't fixed it, we went ahead and spent that $60,000 on the new playground equipment. So, instead of giving it to Patrick, we actually spent the money and ended up with new playground equipment. Okay? But they come in, and they kind of make you be safer. You've probably noticed everybody in town now out in the streets is wearing the yellow vests. That's Patrick. So, okay? Any other questions on that?
Question. We had talked about at our utility window. Is that going to be part of the security system, putting a barrier there?
There, is that one of the specific items? I don't believe that is.
There's some money provided for a security system for City Hall. Now, how you guys spend that, it's totally up to you. If you spend $3,000, you're going to get $2,000 back. If you spend $3,000, you're gonna get $2,000 back.
Picture? Who's got a camera? Make a present. Kathy's gonna take a picture.
Can you do a selfie?
Can you selfie? Oh, yeah. There you go.
Did this grant money for security.
Jenny could be on the website.
You could get your face in the picture. In the paper. You get your picture.
Wayne will. He's in the line, he's like.
Thank you.
And just for somebody in the audience, the reason we're kind of having fun with him is he used to work for the city of Fulton. We're very familiar with him, he's very familiar with us.
I think it's my neighbor.
Well, thanks, Patrick, for your goodies, but I miss my candy bars.
Candy bars? I'll work on that. Thank you, folks.
I just have one more question. It's not necessarily for you, Patrick, but our city handbook that our employees have, has that... When was the last time that was updated or reviewed?
An official update?
Fifty?
Not too long ago.
Thank you.
And every couple of months, she seems to send me kind of a new suggestion or a new option that we will implement at some point.
Is that something that comes to the council as a whole, as one?
It all depends. If we were gonna do a global update, yeah, we would bring it to the city council. But if it's an updated one policy, no, that would not come to the city council.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the second item of new business. Bishop Randy Stevens is with us this evening. And I believe he's representing the Fulton Soup Kitchen and the site this evening. Welcome, Bishop, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, city council and staff. I'm not sure exactly why I get this honor, but I guess because I'm here. A few months ago, well, actually, almost a year ago, I guess, the Soup Kitchen started with some difficulties and needed to have some changes made. Well, those changes and subsequent strife, I guess. The Soup Kitchen is now closed. It's no longer operating out of the community center, which necessitated a change. And Catherine Bader, who is the chairman of the Soup Kitchen, called and asked if I wouldn't intervene and help in some way of helping find a new location to put the Soup Kitchen so that it would function independently and not have the needs that it had and restrictions that were applied there. So as we searched around, a suggestion was made that we look at the Casey's Building on Fourth Street. It's been closed now for about four years. And quite frankly, it looks a little bit like an eyesore in Fulton. And right there on the entrance of Fulton, it doesn't bode well. So we wrote a letter petitioning Casey's and their real estate department that they wouldn't consider donating that facility to the Soup Kitchen. And about a week and a half ago, I received confirmation that they are willing to donate that facility to the Fulton Soup Kitchen. So we're in the process now of getting the title transferred over, and the Soup Kitchen will be the owner of that property. The Soup Kitchen is a 501(c)(3) company or organization, and they provide meals to the homeless and to the needy here in Fulton. And they've had their challenges. Hard enough to do that for those who are less fortunate without the extra roadblocks in the way. Now that we found a facility, however, operating one isn't cheap. And when they were at the community center, the community center provided the power, the gas, the electricity, or, you know, water, sewer, garbage, all of that sort of thing. And so now, you know, we contemplate this move of independence. It comes with some responsibility and some extra burdens. Currently, the Soup Kitchen has about $4,000 in its coffers. And they use that money kind of to keep the wolf from the door, if you will, as they try to provide the meals. Currently, there's an agreement with the Westminster College to provide some services. That doesn't come without problems either, and I think there was an incident, I know it was yesterday or today. And so I'm sure that the welcome mat's gonna be, you know, pulled out pretty quickly. Our desire and hope is that we can do the renovations that are necessary to be done to that building, change out the lighting, get the stoves and everything in there so that we can cook the meals. There are plenty of folks in Fulton who participate in providing meals for these folks. And I represent the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, but I think just about every other church in Fulton has also participated in some way or other to keep the Soup Kitchen going. We have two homeless shelters in Fulton, and they're full right now. At 8:00 in the morning, those who are there are invited to go out onto the street. And they get invited back in about 8:00 at night. If they don't have enough money for housing, it's not likely they're gonna have enough money for food. And so then they're going to be wandering the streets throughout the day. And you live here in Fulton. I live out on a little farm south here. And when I look out, the only homeless I see are the cows. And I'm pretty happy where I live, and I'm very comfortable there. But I also come into town, and I see that. I know that the library provides some shelter during the daytime. One of the things that the Soup Kitchen will provide are not only meals, but it will provide shelter. And the hope is that it will give them an opportunity for those folks to seek skills and to be able to become full participating members in our community. My hope and my joy would be that we could close the Soup Kitchen because we aren't needing to feed anybody. However, Christ, when He was talking to His apostles, told them that the poor will always be among us. You've been in the city council long enough that you know that that statement is true. So there's a great need, and that need exists. So I'm here to petition the city council for relief of those utilities that would be rather expensive. Now, you have a copy I've just received, and it's a little shocking. It shows that the bill, average monthly utility bill for the old Casey's on Fourth Street, this was four years ago, so these are not current numbers, but it was $1,640 a month, or $19,673 a year. Well, that was for a facility that was open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that was using a lot of very expensive lighting, pumping gas, cooking pizzas, et cetera, et cetera. And so I would expect that the utilities for the Soup Kitchen would be more like what a residential home would be. We'd only be there for about 12 hours a day, from about 8:00 in the morning to late evening. In the meantime, you still have to have gas to heat the facility, and you have to have electricity to keep some lights on, and you have to have the water and the sewer and garbage. All those things still have to function. They just won't function quite as active as maybe as they would have as a full-fledged commercial outlet. So with that, I'll open up to questions, if you have any.
I think when he came in the first time, I think we kind of told him that we'd probably be turning this down. And my recommendation to the city council is that we deny this request. I think everybody in the room believes you're an admirable person and an admirable cause. There are many 501(c)(3) organizations in the community, all of them doing good for the community and doing good for the citizens. And we have just made a policy of not supporting any of those because even though in our hearts we do, we don't want to be placed in the position of deciding which 501(c)(3)'s are worthy of our support and which ones are not. So at this point in time, we have just been denying them all.
Okay. Is there anything that would change that status or that opinion? Because I get that, I realize there are lots of 501(c)(3)'s out there. However, I guess what I guess I'm looking at is the benefit to the city of this particular organization is different than any other one that I think you could mention. And the fact that the drain on the community, whether it's your police force, whether it's your street department having to clean up... I mean, I can go on and on and on if you want, but I think it's pretty obvious the benefit the Soup Kitchen would provide. And not having the Soup Kitchen, because not having some relief from the utilities may mean, in fact, that there is no Soup Kitchen. Because we're gonna go out and seek funds, but at $400 a month, that's, you know, we have $4,000 in the coffers. That's 10 months' worth of operating expenses. And that's all going to utilities, rather than going into purchasing food and the things that we need to do to make that happen. So it's a little bit different than the other 501(c)(3)'s that are operating because there are some expenses involved. In most of the other 501(c)(3)'s, there aren't expenses involved to this nature. They provide services automatically. They just operate as a 501(c)(3) so that they can do some fundraising without taxation. This is different. This is an entity that actually is spending the money for the citizens of Fulton. These aren't people that are living out in the county. These aren't people that come from Columbia or someplace else. These are people that live right here in Fulton. And most of them live right there within about four blocks of that facility. So there isn't, you know, like we're saying, oh, yeah, let's not do this or let's do this because of that. There are some things there that should be considered, rather than a blanket no, because everybody gets a no. I'm just, I'm petitioning this because this is an exception.
We just don't want to put ourselves into the position of trying to decide who is worthy and who isn't. And until we cross that bridge and open that door, it's just, it's just easiest to say no. That we are not, we will not do any utility assistance. We... Bishop, we've been asked by many others. The answer's been no every time. Part of me wants to apologize, but part of me would just...
Well, I get... Don't apologize, because I understand the position that you take, because you represent all of the people. Okay? I'm just here representing the Soup Kitchen, trying to make a case that otherwise it's going to be, you know, we're gonna come and knock on your door, and we're gonna ask for a donation, and we'll do that to every citizen in the city. Because that's the only way we can do that. If we can't get relief directly from the utility departments in the city, then the community at large will have to make that, make that case. Thank you.
Steve, so do the homeless shelters get relief from their utilities?
I don't know that answer.
No. Okay.
So they're, they too are in the same boat and without, you know...
Right, and I think just as deserving as your organization.
Sure, absolutely.
And so if we say, yes, you can have relief, shouldn't we not give the homeless shelters relief? And then who else?
I understand.
You know, as worthy as your organization is, how far do we go for this? And that's not something we want to say, but that's something we have to think about.
Absolutely. I don't disagree with your assessment.
Yeah.
Because I know that there are those who are out there. I just know that right now, with the Soup Kitchen, they're not... This isn't something they've been doing. And so it may, may, you know, they're gonna have to go back to the drawing board. And it may not happen.
Or we need to give you, or the citizens need to give you more funding.
Correct. Yeah, the community at large will need to decide whether that is something that they would like to have continue. And, you know, if not, you know, the answer will be in the generosity of the community. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to council concerns. Are there any... This is the time for council members to bring forward any concern they have that is not listed on the agenda, that you'd like to bring forward. And so let's see if you have it. Councilman Moore?
Mr. Mayor, is it... We only have one more meeting left in 2018, I think. And we've been discussing for the last couple of months about... This is my own personal concern. Rest of the council can go along with me or see what they think. We have been told in our... Mr. Caswell's not here this evening, that he wants the council to make a decision on this. And I've come to the point where the standstill, so I would like my voice... My concern is that we make a decision for the park board and the park director, that if we're gonna do something to get started, we go with the, with the community building first. And meanwhile, we are spending money for his design. So start with that project, but he has to stay in the budget of what Mr. Johnson told us the last time, about around 3.5 or 4.
Steve came in to see me today with these concerns. I asked Kathy Hochslag, the CFO, to come join us. And then I asked her to run some financial projections on the amount of debt service that the park and rec sales tax could be able to support on an annual basis. And I think she has a handout for us.
Thank you, Mayor. So my thought was that, and I appreciate Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Hochslag working on this on a short notice, but to answer everyone's question, it's not about how much it's gonna cost. It's what we can afford to build, so that's what we gotta stay at. And so I was throwing out to the council for what they thought about the... Here's the makeup. We've been building by our park director. I'll let you explain, and then we're just gonna stop talk.
Okay. I ran three different projections. I used 4.5% as the interest rate. I think that's probably pretty close for what it'll be around the first of the year. If all the forecasters are right, I look for that to go up. But it was a starting place. I did a $4 million projection, $3 million, and $2.5 million. And I did each one of those for terms of 10, 15, and 20 years. And so probably the column that you're most interested in is the annual payments. And when you look at that, keep in mind that the parks and rec sales tax, I took the liberty of rounding a little, has approximately $415,000 to $420,000 worth of revenue a year. So if you look at the $4 million facility, the 10-year, there's not enough cash flow to pay that. $373, 10 years on the $3 million project, and $310 on the $2.5 million project. And these numbers represent only debt service. So there's no furnishings, no operations, nothing like that. This is just the debt service. And if you look on the other side, just at the interest, the difference between 10 years and 20 years, 20 years is more than double. And historically, the city has never gone longer than 10 years, unless it's a DNR loan. And I included a note at the bottom to show you what cash they have on hand, which at this time, it's about $393,000. which at this time, is about $393,000. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to go into them.
I'm confused about what, what's the ask? You know, we, we have been talking about this for many months. And we've put the design out for bid for both the facilities. We're expecting those back in February. So the design that the park board came up with, of what, what they believe the community wants is what we're putting out for bid. We'll find out in a couple of months what that's going to cost us. So I, I don't, there's nothing that we can do today unless we're going to ask for the bids to be rescinded and tell the park board to pare down their design. I, I guess I don't understand what we're talking about right now.
We are still at a standstill in the way I view the minutes that we have never made the decision which one we're going for, both of them still.
Because we're waiting on the bids. We're, we're, we're not at a standstill. We're at a waiting period to get back the bids to see what the two projects will cost us.
Well, I can, no offense, but I think that we can look right here and tell that we can't build both these projects at the same time. We need to choose one of them.
Projects not out for bid.
They are not out for bid yet.
No, they are not.
You guys had previously voted, and I don't recall the exact meaning. I don't have it in front of me. But you voted to pursue both projects at this time, taking them to the bidding stage, waiting to get those numbers back before you made a decision.
Right.
And I believe what Councilman Moore is stating is he does not believe that both of those projects should move forward, that you need to make a decision on one or the other.
That's correct, ma'am.
If we wait for the bids to come back, it's going to be middle of spring before you get bids back.
Why is that? I, I guess...
By the time you can get the documents out, get the bid proceeding out, it, it'll be at least April or May.
Yeah, but isn't it still going to be that anyway?
Yes.
Because we're still waiting on the one bid, the one item we're waiting on are the items for the community center, which is the one you're suggesting we choose. So it's still going to be that long before we make any decision. So why not just wait?
Well, we can wait all you want, but we still should make a decision which one you build because we know we can't build them both at the same time.
Right, but we don't know which one we want to build until we know what it's going to cost. I guess what, the line of thinking that I'm at right now is we are going to bid out these two projects. And I thought it was going to be February when we were going to get the bids back. But now I guess it's going to be April or May that we get the bids.
I believe he was going to try to get them out for bid in February.
Get them out in February, get the, thank you. That's, that's, that's where I'm mistaken. I thought they were going out and would be back by February. They're going out in February, be back by May. At that point, we're going to find out what these two projects are going to cost. One may cost us 2.5 million for the softball fields. One may cost us 5 million, 6 million, or 4 million for the community center. We don't know. At that point is when we have to decide, do we build, do we build the community center that is just a cost to us? Do we spend the full, you know, 4 million, 5 million, 3 million, whatever we decide to do to build the community center and build it then? And then wait to build the softball fields for another 6, 8, 10 years?
20.
20.
30.
Or do we build the softball fields that are supposed to have a revenue generating tract to them? Then we're able to turn around and build a community center in 2, 3, 4, or 5 years based on that revenue? That's my understanding of what we're waiting on.
I understand your understanding of that. But I know you're smart enough to know the numbers. You know we're not going to build both of them, so let's make a decision. If you want to build the baseball field, probably would be the cheapest one we could build. But to sit here and play the game till May and then we're going to argue again, that is a waste of our time. We're fooling each other here. Make a decision which one you want to build.
Steve?
I can tell you, I can't make a decision tonight, and I won't make a decision tonight.
Well, the way I look at this is, you're right. We cannot build both facilities. No, no way, no how. What do we build? I think the city would be more, would benefit more from our rec center than from the baseball facilities. But we don't know what that rec center is going to cost. If they come back with $6.5 million, well, there's no way we can afford that. Can we build it for 3 million, for 4 million? I don't know. And until, so, so either, so your decision right now, or what I'm guessing you're asking, is that we drop the rec center completely and we go build the baseball fields. But until we find out what the rec center...
It was just the opposite, actually, but...
Just reduce the cost to the rec center.
But we don't know what the baseball, or what the rec center is going to cost.
Right.
Last guess is it's going to be 6. And you're saying we can't afford 6? Which means the only thing we can afford is the softball field.
See, dropping the community center now, or dropping the ball fields now, either one of them, if we can't do the community center in 3, 4 months, whatever that is, then we got to go back and, and pick up the ball fields and go from there. If that's what we decide to do. Or we'll wait another 50, 60 years and see what happens then, so...
I, I think if we make a decision now, the only decision we could reasonably make is drop the rec center and build the ball fields. Because we don't know what the cost of the rec center is going to be. If we wait until March and get the bid packages back and find out the rec center is going to be $6.5 million, then we can either say we're going to pare the rec center back. How big is that going to be? Is it going to be even useful anymore? Or we drop the rec center at that time and build the ball fields.
Or discuss other funding sources.
Well, that's a possibility also, yes.
I, I, maybe it's because I wasn't, I've only been on the council less than two years, but who's to say that the funding revenue from this one tax is the only thing that we use to fund these two projects? We have other funding sources with this city. Did we, is there somewhere in an ordinance, somewhere, a resolution that states the only funding source that we can have for these two projects is this one tax revenue?
Well, we have other obligations.
What, what are you, what are you referring to? What are your other sources, Jeff?
Borrow money from somewhere else?
Well, we can't do that.
If we make a decision...
But you have, you have to have a revenue stream to pay the money back.
I, I think that, I think that part of it is...
We're $193,000 over in our next year's budget, so...
Which is why we have reserves. But we also, the city also has other obligations.
Understand.
That's, that's all this is trying to...
But those are decisions that we can make when we have those numbers.
I think once we have the plans for both projects, you can look at what grant money might be out there. But you have to have something to go on, no matter which one it is. Whether it's, no matter what, you, you have to have what the cost is going to be and what the plan and layout is going to be.
With the community center, I've said from the beginning, a lot of them do this. And I know there's some who do agree with me. But I think if you get a, in the community center, if you have a facility included for safety, tornadoes, whatever, go to FEMA. Doesn't FEMA have money to offer? If there are grants from them, so why not build it with a shelter? And maybe get some monies that way. I don't know if it's possible, but a lot of them do. So that's an idea to help us for funding.
So, Steve, go ahead, you were, you start.
I've got a quick question. When, when the architects and engineers get done with the design build, they'll have an estimated cost of what, what it's going to cost even before it goes out.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll have some kind of an idea in February.
And the whole purpose of this is to tell you, here's how much money we have coming in, here's how much debt service it will support.
Looks like to me, if we just wait till February, see what the cost of, what their estimated cost is going to be, then even before we put it out for bid, you're going to know what, if it's $6 million, then it's, that goes on the shelf. Looks like we could do it that way and then decide in February when they're done designing.
I, if I understand what you're asking, if we decide to not go with both facilities at the same time, let's say option one is we only go with the rec center. We still have to wait to get the bid packages out to find out what that's costing, even to see if we can even afford it. If we decide not to go with the rec center and go with the ball fields, we can't do anything with the ball fields now anyway.
But you're submitting a plan that you know you're going to end back up with the ball fields because you're going to, I mean, why send in a rec center that you know is going to be over budget?
Why not?
And that, well, I guess we don't know that yet.
You've got to stay somewhat in a budget. You, well, you see what your tax is bringing in. He's still got other, four other parks that he has to maintain. That leaves us...
Hopefully, we're not going to, you know, hopefully Parks and Rec is in contact with the engineers and we're not going to get a rec center coming back that's $6.5 million. Hopefully, they're working together to come up with something we can afford. I hope.
One, one advantage, if you do it by the way, Steve's suggestion, at least you can get instant revenue coming off the ball fields for whatever activities will be taking place there. What that is, we don't know. But what...
But his, his motion wasn't to do the ball fields.
He doesn't even want us to...
Just do the rec.
He's wanting us to go ahead and make a decision on the rec center.
The rec center at a reduced cost to stay within dollars.
Steve and I had had this conversation singly, between the two of us in the past.
Clay was the one who said he would refer the rec center first. All I was asking for us as a council to make a decision of which one we should go with. And if you look at the numbers, we, you finally did agree that we can't build them both, so we should decide which one we want to do. But if he puts, if you take the buildings that he had in his first program he gave us, well, we know every one of those designs was over, over what we was talking about. So if we're going to waste our money to send a plan in, why don't we send something in that we know that we can afford? Or, because you're going to talk about tying up 20 years here, so...
I'm not talking 20 years. I'm, I'm saying I need 2 to 3 more months.
I'm talking about whatever you build next.
Okay.
That's fine, we can wait 2 or 3 more months. I mean, I was just making, we need to make a stance. People ask you, well, are you reading the paper? Well, we, well, we either ball field or we're a rec center. You know, y'all did admit we've been too long on it and we just kind of playing a game here with the people now.
I don't think we're playing a game.
I don't think so either.
I've been asked the same questions for the same amount of time. And the answer is, as soon as we get the bids back, we'll know what we can afford.
That's what I agree.
And we'll take it back to the park board, and we'll take it back to the people, and we'll get consensus, and we'll find out what the citizens want to do. And we'll make the right decisions with the right information at the right time.
It's perfectly fine. It takes enough votes to pass something, so I, I live with that.
I think with the revenue stream through the sales tax, this tells you what you can afford. Now, whatever other ideas you have would have to come from a separate source.
Okay.
Just...
This is reality.
I understand.
This is what you said, exactly.
Yeah, I deal in hard numbers.
You sure do.
This is it. That's what, that, that's the debt service.
I appreciate it.
I understand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, who else has a concern? Rick? Richard?
No.
Did you have anything else, Steve? I didn't?
No, that's it.
Okay, John?
I had just asked and been asked about the old, our old maintenance facility. And I understand that it's supposed to be, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks for the demolition.
I think they're going to start December 1st?
So that's...
Now, this is the, the center building only.
The demolition is...
The metal one that's got the roof blown off of it and...
Right.
The red barns on the far side stays and...
Right.
All the buildings along Westminster Avenue stay.
But the biggest eyesore piece of it is going.
One that needs to come down is going to come down.
That's right. Hit the wind blows like it did last night. It might go down on its own.
Okay, anything else, John?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
I was asked about snow road crews. Do we have, do we have anything published about which side of the street people are supposed to park on on snow days? I know Columbia and Jefferson City have a, you know, if it snows on a Tuesday, you're supposed to be on the north side. You're supposed to be on the other side. Do we have anything like that that helps with the road crews?
Right, there is.
Can you come to the mic?
Don't you still have the snow route signs up?
And then is there supposed to be only off-street parking?
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on what day, even an odd day. But it was on our website. I would assume that it would still be there. It's been a while since I personally went to the website. But I do believe it's still advertised on our website.
If we can find some way to make that extremely public, well-known of what, you know, no, no road parking on snow routes.
I'll talk with Darren, maybe we can put, put, trim it down, put it in the newsletter or something.
Newsletter, newspaper, Facebook page, something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Jeff? Mary?
Tomorrow, we're going to be decorating our, our Christmas tree at the park. So anyone, around 3 o'clock, anyone that wants to help, come on down. Bring all the decorations you got, and we're going to make it pretty.
Thank you.
Appreciate the help.
Taylor?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Elaine, nothing? Very good, thank you. We'll move on, or does anyone need a break? We'll move on and we'll do resolutions. We have one resolution, looks like. Councilman Schibidecker, would you please introduce Resolution 3322, which is a resolution that has to do with a contract with a geotechnical engineering services. I have a second one.
Yes, sir. Resolution 3322, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to proposals for geotechnical engineering services with TerraCon Consultants Incorporated of St. Louis, Missouri, in the amount of not to exceed $11,900 and establishing an effective date to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3322 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Have a motion, a second to adopt 3322. Any further motions or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting 3322, please signify yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it. 3322 is adopted. Well, now we move on to ordinances. Second reading. Bill number 1519 is a land that declares certain land surplus property to the city. Councilman Moore, would you please present second reading, bill number 1519?
Bill number 1519, an ordinance authorized the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to declare certain tracts of land to be surplus property, authorizing a distribution and establishing an effective date. I move this for third reading by title only at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion, and I think I heard a second. Uh, let bill number 1519 be advanced for third reading. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor advancing 1519, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is have it. Bill number 1519 is advanced for third reading. Councilman Moore, I believe you said tonight, would you please present 1519 by title only? by title only?
Bill number one-five-one-nine, an ordinance authorizing mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to declare certain tracts of land to be surplus property, authorizing a distribution and establishing effective data, move this to final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion in second to advance fifteen nineteen for final passage, or to be, for final consideration, excuse me, all those, uh, is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Bill number fifteen nineteen has be, has been read three times, you've heard it, and it's now time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no to roll call.
Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Okay, very good, thank you. Bill number first, fifteen nineteen is approved. We'll now consider Bill number fifteen twenty, which is a, uh, bill that changes a right-ofway of the cities into a right-ofway for a private road, or into a private, uh, property. Uh, Councilman Vaughn, would you please present fifteen twenty by title only?
Bill number fifteen twenty, an ordinance authorizing conversion of city property historically used as a means of access from Churchill Road into a right-ofway for a private development and establish a name for said right-ofway and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill fifteen twenty for third reading at the next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion in second to advance fifteen, twenty for third reading. Is there any further discussion or, or questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of advancing fifteen twenty, please signify saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Uh, Bill number fifteen twenty will now be presented by Councilman Vaughn for third reading.
That'll actually be at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Oh, did you say next? Okay, sorry. Goes my hearing again, okay. Uh, we'll now move on to Bill number fifteen twenty-one, which is an ordinance that, uh, makes an exception to the International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, Councilman Stone, would you please present fifteen twenty-one by title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance amending section eighteen dash eighty-three amendments Fulton City Code by incorporating an additional exception to the two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen twenty-one for third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in second to advance fifteen twenty-one for third reading. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is habit. Bill number fifteen twenty-one is advanced for third reading. Councilman Stone, would you please present it, uh, by title only?
Bill number fifteen twenty-one, an ordinance amending section eighteen dash eighty-three amendments Fulton City Code by incorporating an additional exception to the two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen twenty-one for final passage at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion in second to advance Bill number fifteen twenty-one to final consideration. Uh, are there any questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor advancing fifteen twenty-one, please consider, uh, please indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is habit, thank you. Uh, Bill number fifteen twenty-one has been read three times, and it is now time for final passage or final consideration. Please, uh, indicate your decision by yes or no as the clerk reads the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, thank you. That's fifteen twenty-one is adopted. Okay, we'll now move on to third reading ordinances, and Bill number fifteen seventeen is an ordinance that adopts the ca, uh, the budget, the operating budget, and the capital improvement, uh, budget for the year twenty nineteen. Uh, Councilman Vaughn, would you please present, uh, fifteen seventeen for third reading, title only?
Bill number fifteen seventeen, an ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the City of Fulton for the fiscal year January one of two thousand and nineteen, ending December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. I make a motion to move fifteen seventeen for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion in second to advance, uh, fifteen seventeen for final consider, consideration. Uh, are there any, uh, questions or discussion of that motion?
Just one I have, has there been any other tweaks?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Very good. All those, uh, hearing no further discussion or, or questions, uh, all those in favor advancing fifteen seventeen for final, uh, please signify saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
One no. Okay. Uh, very good. It's now, you've heard Bill number fifteen seventeen presented three ti, read three times, it's now time for final consideration. Please signify your vote by a yes or no, uh, as clerk reads the roll.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Shyland?
Yeah.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one opposed.
Very good, thank you. Number, uh, fifteen seventeen is adopted. Very good. Uh, Bill number fifteen twenty-two has to do with the show-me-green sales tax holiday. If you please present, present fifteen twenty-two for third reading?
Yes, sir.
Title only.
Bill number fifteen twenty-two, an ordinance allowing the show-me-green sales tax holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the City of Fulton, Missouri, between April nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Make a motion to advance Bill fifteen twenty-two for final consideration at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I have a, a motion in a second to advance, uh, fifteen twenty-two. Is there any, uh, questions or, uh, discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. You've heard, uh, Bill number fifteen twenty-two presented three times, and it's now time for, uh, final pa, uh, final consideration or indicate your, your vote by either a yes or a no, uh, as a clerk reads the roll.
Mr. Shiver, oh, I'm just kidding, I'm sorry, we're up to you there.
You're right, Ellen.
A little overzealous. Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, thank you. Turn the page over, and looks like we have Bill number, uh, fifteen twenty-three, which is a back-to-school sales tax holiday. Uh, Councilman Simmons, would you please present fifteen twenty-three, I think we're third reading, please.
Bill number fifteen twenty-three, an ordinance allowing the back-to-school sales tax holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the City of Fulton, Missouri, between August second, two thousand and nineteen, and August fourth, two thousand and nineteen. I make a motion to advance Bill number fifteen twenty-three, uh, as third reading and do the final approval tonight.
Second.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion in sec, second, excuse me, to advance fifteen twenty-three for final consideration. Is there any further discussion or, or question? Hearing none, all those in favor advancing fifteen twenty-three saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. You've heard, uh, Bill number fifteen twenty-three presented three times, it's now time for final consideration. Uh, please indicate your, uh, vote by a yes or a no, as the clerk reads the roll.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good, thank you. Bill number fifteen twenty-three is, is adopted. We'll now consider, uh, Bill number fifteen twenty-four, which is a change order for some work along the Fourth Street Improvement Project. Uh, Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present fifteen twenty-four for third reading, title only?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, Bill number fifteen twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a change order for the Fourth Street Improvements Project with the Commission of Galway County, Missouri, for reimbursement on all labor and materials to complete the Court Street and Fourth Street curb gutter and sidewalk improvement. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen twenty-four for final passage at this meeting.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion in second to advance fifteen twenty-four. Is there any further discussion or questions on this motion?
Uh, yes, I just have one question. On the, on the court order itself, right up at the top, it says October of term two thousand and eighteen, but then in the, in the wording, it's November, does that make any difference at all?
It doesn't make a difference, but we'll check on it.
Yeah, good point.
Do you see what he's talking about, Court?
Um, I will make a note of it when I get mine back.
Here, October two thousand and eighteen, but then in the body.
Right. Yep, we can make contact with the county clerk and see if that was a, I'm sure that was probably just an error on their part.
I know they want to do it, so.
Right, yeah, I'm not-
But good catch, thank you.
Yeah, just a good-
Yeah. Uh, very good, are there any other questions or comments?
Just a curiosity of why, um, Commissioner Fisher was, why did he abstain?
Um, he said he's got relations that works for or owns the company at that point.
That was the assumption, but I wasn't sure. Thank you, I'm just curious.
Any others? Hearing none, all those, uh, in favor advancing fifteen twenty-four for final consideration, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. There you go. And, uh, okay, you've heard Bill number fifteen twenty-four presented three times, it's now time for final consideration, please signify your, uh, indicate your vote by a yes or no, as clerk reads the roll.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
And Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Thank you. And I assure you, I will not sign this thing until we have, uh, an answer on the date.
It, it, it may be nothing, but-
Yes.
It certainly does not match.
Dates kinda flow all over. I think it laid on his desk for several days before he got to it. Anyway, we'll see. Uh, thank you. Uh, we're now to announcements. Pam, clerk, you wanna?
Certainly. Uh, our final council meeting of two thousand and eighteen is gonna be held on Tuesday, December eighteenth, at six-thirty PM. Uh, we will not have a work session that night, it'll just be like tonight's meeting, where we'll head right into the meeting. And item B, candidate packets for the offices of mayor, city attorney, and first through fourth ward council members are available in the office of the city clerk, Monday through Friday, eight to five PM. Candidate filing will open December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, at eight AM, and will close January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at five PM. Um, for additional information, please contact myself at five-seven-three-five-nine-two-three-one-one-one, and I'm happy to go over any information with anyone.
Very good, thank you. We, uh, I do not have a need for an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?